Good evening, and thank you for joining us for committee interviews being held just before our council meeting this evening. I do have a report out from our closed session. We just met on two property-related closed-session items, and there is nothing to report out at this time. So we will be interviewing four candidates for one vacancy on the Forest Management Committee. Do we have any public comment for the special meeting related to these interviews?
I see no public comment, and we have three of the four candidates here so far. But I would suggest that you go ahead and start.
Okay. So, welcome to our participants. We will be interviewing four candidates for one vacancy on the Forest Management Committee. And we will be doing this process in a candidate forum style. So I'd like to introduce our four candidates. We have Erin Kelly, Lucy Carolis, Peter Lehman, and Canton Levine. So what we'll do is we will start with Erin Kelly, and then rotate in the order of who goes first, answering each additional question in alphabetical order by last name. And we ask that you please limit your answer to around one minute each. Okay, so I will start with asking an opening question, and this is going to go to Erin first. And then I'll pass it on to other council members to ask additional questions. So our first question is, "The Forest Management Committee advises the city on practices to manage the city's community forest lands for multiple benefits and habitat diversity. What expertise and experience would you bring to complement this goal?"
Sure, thanks Karen for letting me speak to this, and thanks to everyone for inviting us. I think I would bring quite a bit of background in forestry rules and regulations. So I'm a registered professional forester, and I'm very familiar with the California Forest Practice Rules. And I also would bring a lot of perspective in terms of kind of the goals and objectives of the community forest broadly. So part of management is constrained by the rules, but part of the management of the forest, of course, is to achieve, you know, carbon sequestration and habitat diversity and watershed restoration and protection. And I'm familiar with all these goals, and I'm kind of familiar with kind of how the community forest has tried to achieve them. And so I think that I would be a good proponent of a lot of these different objectives and try to kind of balance these different objectives in meetings.
Thank you, Erin. So Lucy, the same question is, "The Forest Management Committee advises the city on practices to manage the city's community forest lands for multiple benefits and habitat diversity. What experience and expertise would you bring to complement this goal?"
Yeah, well, I have a really strong background in forest ecology. I have a bachelor's degree in botany and then a master's degree in redwood specifically, physiology. And then also a PhD looking at ponderosa pine management in the southwest. So I bring a lot of forest ecology expertise to the committee. And I've also taught in the HSU Forestry Department for the past eight years. So I'm pretty well-versed in a lot of different aspects of forestry. And then kind of, I think, as a testament to the sort of meaningfulness of the work that I've done in forestry and that I continue to do, my work has been funded by a really diverse group of funders, including the National Science Foundation and Save the Redwoods League are two of the big ones. So, and the US Department of Energy. So I feel like their endorsement speaks well to the meaningfulness of my expertise in this field of forest ecology. And I hope that that could kind of inform decisions that the committee might make. And finally, kind of indirectly, my husband is a wildlife biologist and teaches in the HSU Wildlife Department. And we work together a lot on various research projects, kind of combining forestry and wildlife. And so I feel like, sort of indirectly, some of his knowledge and expertise has sort of rubbed off on me over the years. So I feel like I bring that component to the table as well. Yeah, I think those are all the things I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Lucy. Peter, "The Forest Management Committee advises the city on practices to manage the city's community forest lands for multiple benefits and habitat diversity. What expertise and experience would you bring to complement this goal?"
Well, let me talk about two things. One, I'm trained as a scientist. I have a PhD in chemistry, and I've taught environmental engineering at HSU for over 40 years. I founded the Schott's Energy Research Center. I brought in about $25 million to HSU. I'm familiar with budgets and grants and proposals. The second thing is, I love the forest. I have lived in Arcata for over 40 years. I probably hiked and biked in the forest well over 1,000 times. I know every step of every trail and a number of the trees. I love the forest, and I want to see that it's well-managed.
Thank you, Peter. And so the final question is for Canton, or the final candidate for this question, sorry. "The Forest Management Committee advises the city on practices to manage the city's community forest lands for multiple benefits and habitat diversity. What expertise and experience would you bring to complement this goal?"
Well, I have been on the Arcata's Open Spaces and Agriculture Committee. And when I was there, I have some knowledge about our specific parcels of land. I have a lot of passion for the forest. I have experience living and working at a heirloom seed farm, where I learned a lot about permaculture and I privately studied environmental diversity for about a decade.
Thank you, Canton. So I'll turn it over to Vice Mayor Goldstein for question number two.
Thank you. And this question, we will start with Lucy. "The city's forest management plan emphasizes science, stewardship, and community participation. What do you think stewardship means, and how can the city continue to promote forest stewardship and encourage resident involvement?"
I think that the committee can promote forest stewardship by continuing to be like a national, if not global, example in active, effective forest management. So I find the forest particularly inspiring, that it can serve all of these different needs of our very diverse community with a lot of different stakeholders and people that want to see different things coming out of the forest. So I think they, so far, the Arcata Community Forest has done an amazing job as far as effectively managing the forest to have recreational spaces, to be actively producing timber and sequestering carbon and harboring nice wildlife habitat. And I think continuing these things with informed knowledge from committee members and also by being open to taking community input are good steps in terms of continuing doing a good thing. Not to say that there's not always room for improvement, but they're doing a great job. And I think they should keep on doing what they're doing, and I'd like to help foster that.
Thank you. Next up is Peter. "The city's forest management plan emphasizes science, stewardship, and community participation. What do you think stewardship means, and how can the city continue to promote forest stewardship and encourage resident involvement?"
Well, as I said, I'm trained as a scientist. And I certainly am familiar with applying scientific principles to good management. I think the city has done an exemplary job of making the forest a real good example of how we can both enjoy the forest and manage it well. I think that the community could do an even better job at promoting sequestering carbon and serving as a role model for other communities, other forests, to do the same. I think sponsoring young people to hike in the forest and to bike in the forest would be an excellent way to promote forest health in our community.
Thank you. Canton, "The city's forest management plan emphasizes science, stewardship, and community participation. What do you think stewardship means, and how can the city continue to promote forest stewardship and encourage resident involvement?"
Well, I feel like stewardship is having a passion and a love for the forest. Even if everyone in the community doesn't feel it as intensely and deeply as I do, I believe that there's a lot of ways that we can reach out to the community to make it easy for people to participate. And I think having things like cleanup projects with HSU and as well as trying to have like clear ways of advertising the forest that we have, is we have new people coming in and people who may not have grown up in this area or known the forest as well. So I do think like we already do a really good job in the way we keep our trails and stuff like that. And I think focusing on what's working and making sure people are aware of it is what will probably work the best.
Thank you. Erin, "The city's forest management plan emphasizes science, stewardship, and community participation. What do you think stewardship means, and how can the city continue to promote forest stewardship and encourage resident involvement?"
So I think stewardship in the community forest is largely about kind of growing bigger, older forest structure. I think that's been a goal for forest management. So from a forestry perspective, I think that's what stewardship is about. It's about continuing to, you know, do some level of timber harvest within the forest and very, you know, more than sustainable. It's really about timber harvest that leaves behind a better forest over time. So I think that's stewardship. I think it's linked with resident involvement. I mean, part of it is maintaining all this, these amazing recreational opportunities that, you know, that Peter spoke to, and maintaining those recreational opportunities alongside this stewardship. So an example is like stationing people by timber harvest, which I know they do in the community forest, you know, to explain to people what's going on and really involve recreationists also in that working forest part of what's going on. Other resident involvement, I mean, there's great volunteer opportunities. I think that there are a lot of opportunities for citizen science and for sort of discovering what goes on in the forest. I know at HSU, we have a lot of students go up there and conduct scientific experiments and sort of use it as an, you know, an open-air laboratory. And I think that there are, you know, perhaps more opportunities, things, you know, just to think about down the road. I really think that there are opportunities to involve people more in, you know, coordinated field trips with HSU and the city. And that's something that I, I think that having someone from HSU on the committee could really bring that perspective, is kind of like bringing the science from HSU to some of the community forest activities.
Thank you.
Okay, so our third question will be read by Councilmember Schaefer.
Okay, and we are going to start with you, Peter. And so the question is, "What do you see as upcoming opportunities and challenges for the city's community forest lands?"
Well, as I said, I think one of the big opportunities is to show other communities, other forests, how we can be a role model at sequestering carbon. Climate change is the existential threat of this century. And it's happening much faster than anyone imagined. And the fact that we can use the forest to serve as an example of how we can get carbon out of the atmosphere would be a huge step forward. Can you repeat the question again? I'm sorry.
No worries. I mean, I think you were given a great answer, but yeah. What do you see as upcoming opportunities and challenges for the community forest lands?
Yeah, I think the biggest challenge is continuing to have harvest plans that really enhance the forest. As a person who goes into the forest a lot, some of the harvest plans, I think, have not been as well-designed as they could be, and the forest suffered for it. And I think a challenge is to make the harvest plans be less destructive to the forest than some of them have been in the past.
Great, thank you, Peter. Same question to Canton. What do you see as upcoming opportunities and challenges for the city's community forest lands?
Yeah. Can you repeat the question? Because it was asking, it was me to unmute right as you were speaking.
The question is, "What do you see as upcoming opportunities and challenges for the city's community forest lands?"
It's maintaining the health of the forest system and working on harvesting and making sure that things are right in the recreational, social, and cultural areas that have always been there in our forests and continuing to do that.
Thank you. Same question to Erin. What do you see as upcoming opportunities and challenges for the city's community forest lands?
So I guess, starting with opportunities, I think that there are opportunities to work with neighbors. I think that's one. HSU is now a neighboring landowner in Jacobi Creek. I think that there are, one of the opportunities there is actually to just extend the sort of vision of the community forest onto new property. And I mean, the vision by, again, kind of like growing older forest structure, growing more complex forest structure, and in this case, helping a formerly industrial forest become a better habitat and more protective of that watershed. Other opportunities, I mean, there are a lot, I think, that center on expanding research, expanding certain recreational opportunities. I know that recently there was a new bike trail built that had like, you know, some kind of dips and divots and things. And I think that that's exciting to kind of bring new people into the forest and give them sort of new opportunities to do things. I think that in terms of challenges, I'll go back to my neighboring landowner's statement and say that there are going to be some challenges with neighboring landowners. I mean, potentially challenges in terms of development along the edges, which always brings like, things like non-native species. Also challenges in terms of just, you know, making sure that the that the continuousness of the forest, like, isn't disrupted by what I see as the biggest threat potentially for forests in our area, which is development, you know, and bringing everything that comes with development next to these big, wonderful forest habitats.
Great, thank you, Erin. And then last, we will hear from Lucy. What do you see as upcoming opportunities and challenges for the city's community forest lands?
Thanks. Yeah, for opportunities, I feel like my, the previous three people have hit a lot of the pertinent points here. But I think for opportunities, as Erin mentioned already, but there's a lot of opportunity, I think, to grow the connection between the forest, the Arcata Community Forest, and the community via things like maybe, you know, monthly webinars. Or for a while, there was the Forest Ecology kind of like lecture series that were happening. So things like that, even doing like a science spotlight once a month or something, where we feature some cool aspect of the, of the Arcata Community Forest. I think there's a lot of room there, or guided natural walks, maybe with different members of the committee. I know Marc Andre sometimes does those types of things, so kind of enhancing those types of things. I think also there's an opportunity to try to expand the carbon sequestration components of the management for the Arcata Community Forest. It seems like that could be kind of enhanced a little bit or expanded pretty drastically. I had the advantage of being able to jot down some notes while other people were talking about my thoughts. And then the last opportunity I'll mention is just being, which it already is, but continuing to be a real role model in terms of effective forest stewardship. So striking this amazing balance of managing the land for all of these different goals, recreation, like natural beauty, a peaceful place for people to go, but also a renewable natural resource, timber, that we all need and want. And so sometimes there can be public misconceptions about logging. And so I think by, a real opportunity for the Arcata Community Forest is to set a really good example, which they're already doing, but to try to improve public kind of perceptions of what forestry looks like and what logging looks like, and how that can be done in a beautiful and meaningful way. As far as challenges go, I think that, you know, increasing climate change, like increasing drought, not so much right here on the coast, but, you know, like fires sweeping the state, these types of natural phenomena could be challenges for the Arcata Community Forest as well, even though we all sort of feel like we're in this little bubble here on the North Coast. But those could be challenges moving into the future as far as forest health goes. And then, as I mentioned, this could be an opportunity, but it could also be a challenge, just public perception, if people are having issues with how logging is going on or something like that in the forest. I think that those could be, that could be a challenge moving forward.
Great, thank you, Lucy.
Okay, so that'll leave Councilmember Matthews with our final question.
Thank you. Okay, Canton, you're up first. "Forest monitoring feedback is important to inform our science-based decision-making and future management. Do you have experience or expertise with natural resource monitoring that would be helpful to the city?"
I am new to natural resource monitoring. Although I think that a lot of my strength in monitoring parcels of land for Open Spaces and Agriculture Committee gives me some idea of that.
Thank you. Erin, "Forest monitoring feedback is important to inform our science-based decision-making and future management. Do you have experience or expertise..." Do you have experience or expertise with natural resource monitoring that would be helpful to the city?
I think I do. So I was on the, the state's Effectiveness Monitoring Committee for Forest Practices under the Board of Forestry that was charged with reviewing the effectiveness of the forest practice rules within the state and how they're operating on, on lands across the state. Part of why I was on there is because I am a professor at HSU in the Forestry Department, and also I'm a registered professional forester, so that it was kind of a group of people meeting to talk about, you know, this connection between policy and rulemaking and whether it's actually working. Another monitoring group I've been on is in the Rogue Basin, which is up in Southern Oregon. I'm on their monitoring, kind of oversight group. So we're a group that, that watches, not watches, but sort of oversees some of their monitoring plans and makes sure that they make sense ecologically and socially. And I'm also on the North Coast Regional Land Trust Board, which does a lot of monitoring, and I've attended some of their just kind of onsite monitoring visits and check-in on conservation easements, not as a staff member, as a volunteer. But those are all volunteer activities I have participated in with monitoring.
Wonderful, thank you. Lucy. Forest monitoring feedback is important to inform our science-based decision-making and future management. Do you have experience or expertise with natural resource monitoring that would be helpful to the city?
Yeah, I do. I, I think that this is actually one of my strengths. A lot of my research has been focused on monitoring the efficacy of management treatments, so on-the-ground science, like plot-based measurements. I've worked on this in ponderosa pine system, and I've worked on it pretty extensively in the redwood forest ecosystem, and then also in oak woodlands. And so my science background, I, I'm like, I do a lot of plant physiology stuff, so we do on-the-ground measurements of, like, plant water status, productivity at the leaf level, like, how much are they photosynthesizing? And I also use tree rings to look at longer-term responses. So recently, I just did a study and it got, it just kind of got published, so it's, I feel like, oh, it's done. But we just finished that, and it was looking at a, a chronosequence of time, so in Redwood National Park on Hold Hill Ridge, looking at stands that were thinned in 1978, dot, 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 all the way to stands that were thinned in 2017, and kind of looking at short and long-term forest responses. And we looked not only at the trees, but we also looked at understory plant communities, and we looked at birds and mammals also, so wildlife communities, and how they responded to these management treatments across time. So that was pretty cool. And with my husband, I do a lot of tree climbing, and we monitor for tree voles. So I've also done that type of, of environmental monitoring, so canopy stuff, looking at epiphytes growing in the crowns of trees, and how this might vary with stand characteristics, and also kind of arboreal mammal habitat suitability and how to detect those types of things. So those are, some of the, like, on-the-ground science that I've done in terms of forest monitoring.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Peter. Forest monitoring feedback is important to inform our science-based decision-making and future management. Do you have experience or expertise with natural resource monitoring that would be helpful to the city?
I do. As a scientist and an environmental engineer, I've been involved in environmental measurements for my whole career. And I am an expert at analyzing data, drawing conclusions from data, using measurement instruments, calibrating instruments, so that they give accurate measurements. And I feel at home with data and think I could do a good job monitoring the forest.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so I would just like to thank again all of our applicants. That concludes our committee interviews, and as you may have seen, it'll be, we'll be discussing this later on in the meeting and choosing a candidate to fill this position. So thanks so much. We're gonna take just a quick break before we go into the next meeting.
That sounds good. Before we do that, I was just gonna have our Environmental Services Director, Emily Singcorn, just give you a couple of thoughts just around where the committee is and the expertise they have. So as you think through these extremely qualified candidates for this one position during the meeting, might be able just to help you as you get there. If we want to indulge for just another two minutes, Emily, yet two minutes.
Perfect, no, perfect, thank you, Emily.
Great, well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, and thank you very much to our candidates for the Forest Management Committee. Environmental Services serves as the liaison to this committee, so just wanted to share some quick words on our current expertise on the committee. But as you know, the Forest Management Committee has really been essential as a community partner in really advising the city on forestry practices on our forest lands, reviewing proposed forest harvest and other restoration plans, and then really providing recommendations on overall forest management in our forest management plan. This committee has had many dedicated community members serving on it for many years, and actually, many decades also. Our current committee expertise really represents a broad range of forestry and natural resource experience, including in watershed science and restoration, wildlife management, geology, fisheries, and forest management also. With our recent departure of a longtime member, Russ Forsberg, who is on the committee for 30 years, we did lose some expertise around forest economics and knowledge of local timber markets. But overall, our department is really delighted by the strong candidates and the, and the time our candidates have taken to do the interviews today.
Thank you, Emily. We appreciate that. Okay, we'll just take a couple minutes for a short break, and then we will come back for our regular meeting. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
It has on our town. For those just joining us, the City Council met earlier in closed session on two property-related items, and there is nothing to report out at this time. The Council also interviewed candidates for a vacancy on the Forest Management Committee. So if you would like to, please join me for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please take the role?
Mayor Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goldstein.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Watson is absent, but we do have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. So if you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are two ways to do so. If you are logged on to the Zoom meeting webinar, click on Raise Your Hand when it is time for the public comment on the item on which you wish to speak. The clerk will unmute you, and you will have two minutes to comment. You can also access the meeting by phone. Call the number at the bottom of the screen. Enter the meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen. Press *9 on your phone. This will raise your hand. When it is time for public comment, the clerk will unmute your phone. You will hear a prompt that will indicate that your phone is unmuted. So Item 3 on our agenda is Ceremonial Matters. So we have four different proclamations this evening, and so we will all be taking one to read. So we'll go ahead and start with our first one, which is going to be read by... Who's reading the first one? Sarah. Councilmember Schaefer is reading the first proclamation. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a proclamation in recognition of the Great American Smokeout, November 18, 2021. Whereas the American Cancer Society encourages all tobacco users to join the Great American Smokeout and quit smoking for at least one day. And whereas each year nearly 34,000 California adults die from smoking and over 20,000 kids become new daily smokers. And whereas flavored tobacco products make smoking and vaping electronic cigarettes attractive to youth and harder to quit. And whereas there are nearly 4 million adult smokers in California, but only 3.1% use electronic cigarettes. And whereas more than 84% of high school smokers use electronic cigarettes, almost all of which are flavored. And whereas electronic cigarettes create hazardous waste in the form of plastics, semiconductors, heavy metals, and lithium-ion batteries for which there is no established disposal or recovery procedure. And whereas on Saturday, November 13, there will be an Escape the Vape event on Arcata Plaza between 10:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m., where folks can safely dispose of electronic smoking devices and learn how to quit for good. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes and supports the American Cancer Society's Great American Smokeout on Thursday, November 18, 2021, and encourages all residents who use tobacco products to consider that they do not have to stop smoking in one day. Just start with Day 1.
Thank you. Next, Vice Mayor Goldstein will read Proclamation B.
This is a proclamation in recognition of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, November 13 through the 21st, 2021. Whereas the theme of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week 2021 is being homeless is not a crime and housing is a human right. And whereas people from all walks of life, including individuals, families with children, employed and unemployed workers, elderly residents, veterans, disabled individuals, and youth are impacted by hunger and homelessness. And whereas the community recognizes that hunger and homelessness continues to be a serious problem for many individuals and families living in Arcata, and no one should have to worry about whether they will have food on their plate or a roof over their head. And whereas the California Center for Rural Policy reported in their Humboldt County Food Assessment that hunger is a daily experience and that more than 31% of adults experience food insecurity, while 37% of households with children experience food insecurity. Most live on a fixed income or survive paycheck to paycheck. And whereas while homelessness creates barriers to accessing essential services such as affordable health care, housing, childcare, and education, the cost of these necessities often contribute to hunger, food insecurity, and people experiencing homelessness on any given night. And whereas the aim of the National Coalition for the Homeless is to eradicate homelessness by solving the root cause of it, to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing for low-income residents, and to encourage support for the organizations committed to sheltering, providing support services, and as well as meals, food supplies, clothing, and hygiene products to homeless and hungry. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Arcata that November 13 through the 21st, 2021, is National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and encourages all people in the community to work together to find meaningful solutions for these problems, dated November 3, 2021, and signed by Mayor Atkins Salazar.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Matthews.
Proclamation in recognition of Adoption Awareness Month, November 2021. Whereas every child deserves a loving, culturally sensitive, and permanent family. Sadly, there are many children in Humboldt County, the state of California, and worldwide who do not have the comfort and security of having their essential needs met by the adults in their lives. These children are waiting for an adoptive parent to help meet their needs. And whereas not all children waiting for homes are newborns. Older boys and girls, teens, siblings, and minority groups of children who need to be placed wait every day for someone to say, "I have a home for you." Some children have unique medical, emotional, or physical needs, but still hope to find the joy and stability a permanent family affords a child. And whereas around 430,000 children are in foster care in the United States. More than one-fifth of them live in California. In Humboldt County, there are around 400 children in foster care. Many of these children will need permanent adoptive homes. And whereas around 24,000 youth age out of the foster care system without ever finding new parents, sparking the need for one caring person connections to help them avoid homelessness, poverty, unemployment, no further education, and lack of connections. And whereas Adoption Horizons is joining efforts with other child welfare agencies who are working hard to recruit, retain, and support foster parents so there is a resource pool of families for the many children coming into care. And whereas Adoption Horizons have been providing services to children and families for 38 years, assisting families who are waiting to adopt children domestically and internationally, and providing them with the guidance, education, and support to be successful parents. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata recognizes the month of November 2021 as Adoption Awareness Month. The Council encourages Arcata's residents to support and celebrate families who adopt and to remember the children who are still waiting. Dated November 3, 2021, signed by Stacy Atkins Salazar, Mayor.
Thank you. And our last proclamation of the evening is in recognition of National Hospice Month for November of 2021. Whereas Hospice of Humboldt has been caring for those who are terminally ill and their families for over 42 years, hospice care focuses on quality of life with an emphasis on pain control and symptom management. Patients receive heartfelt care so they can live peacefully in their home or at the Ida Emerson Hospice House, surrounded by their loved ones. In the last year, Hospice of Humboldt served over 640 patients and their families in Humboldt County. And whereas the Hospice of Humboldt staff, including physicians, nurse practitioners, registered nurses, social workers, home health aides, chaplains, physical therapists, dieticians, and volunteers, remain committed during the ongoing public health crisis to providing patient-centered care that honors the wishes of their patients. And whereas Hospice of Humboldt provides grief support services and information to our entire community, including support groups, one-on-one counseling, and counseling for businesses and schools. And whereas Hospice of Humboldt believes that when further treatment is no longer the right answer, hospice can provide new hope for a comfortable end of life with dignity. Hospice provides a life-affirming environment where patients can find meaning and purpose at the end of life. Hospice of Humboldt encourages everyone to learn more about the options available for the last stage of life and to share their wishes with their family, loved ones, and healthcare professionals. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Arcata that November 2021 is National Hospice Month. The Council wishes to congratulate and thank Hospice of Humboldt for increasing awareness of the importance of hospice care and providing these essential services in our community for the last 42 years. Dated today, November 3, signed by myself. And just as someone who has had the honor and pleasure of working with hospice for the passing of some of my loved ones, I just want to say personally, it's an amazing organization, and I think we're very grateful to have them here in our community. So, thank you. Okay, so next, we have early communications. So this is a chance for people to address the Council on matters that are not on our agenda. And at the conclusion of all oral communications, the Council may respond to statements. Any requests that requires Council action will be set by the Council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the Council at this time are limited to two minutes, and we can take up to seven speakers. Please raise your hand if you are on Zoom or press *9 if you are calling in by phone and wish to make a comment.
First up, we have call-in user 5. Go ahead. Call-in user 5, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. This is Joanne McGreta McGary. I'm actually, if you weren't aware, sitting outside of City Hall in the entrance in order to be as present as I can for you. I really hope that sooner we are able to meet in person, even if it's just for this public comment purposes. Anyway, I did send you all an email this week, and my intention is to be outside of City Hall every day for hopefully at least two hours in solidarity with the Fridays for Future, Greta Thunberg's leadership in COP in Glasgow, Scotland, COP 26. And I am calling on one of the issues, which is the declaration of a climate emergency that occurred with the old Council back in September of 2019. And I would really like for you, if you continue declarations of emergency for pandemic, that's this little wave in front of the big wave of climate change and the climate emergency, and I would like for you to consider every meeting continuing that climate emergency declaration as well, so that you're saying something out loud about it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
I see no other early oral communications.
Okay, so we'll be moving on to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So we have Item A, approve the minutes of the special City Council meeting of October 20th, 2021. B, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of October 20th, 2021. C, biweekly report on general warrants. D, declare a continuum of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic. E, reappoint Scott Davies to the Planning Commission for a term expiring March 31 of 2024. And F, award a construction contract for the annual sidewalk improvements project 2021 to RAO Construction Company, Incorporated, in the amount of $136,502, and authorize the city engineer to increase the contract amount by up to $27,340.40, which is 20% for a total of $163,802.40, to allow for any unforeseen contingencies and additional work as necessary, and to authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Is there a council member that would like to remove an item? Is there a member of the public or of staff that requests an item be removed from the consent calendar?
We have one hand up. Maggie, go ahead. Did you want to remove an item from consent calendar?
No, I had another question about the agenda, so I can do it at another time. It's not specific to what's being... It's on the table right now.
Okay, all right, thanks. No, there's nothing to remove, thank you.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
A second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Schaefer and a second by Vice Mayor Goldstein, and it passes unanimously. Thank you. So next, we move on to new business, and this is to appoint one new member to the Forest Management Committee for a term expiring March 31, 2023. So we just did those interviews a few minutes ago. Do we have any discussion or recommendations from council?
I feel like all of these candidates were very strong and really have some expertise in forestry. However, based off of what our departments had said, is that they really are missing somebody that has experience now with forest economics and somebody that has experience. And I really do see that Erin listed on her application that she does have experience with forest economics, and I would support appointing her just because of that extra additional knowledge that she did mention, so.
I agree. I think that's an excellent point, and I would support that as well. But I also... This was very tough with so many highly qualified candidates.
Absolutely, and I just want to thank everybody for putting their names forward, and I'm so impressed with the breadth of expertise we have. It's definitely a tough decision, but I will agree with Sarah and Emily.
Yeah. Okay, so I move that we appoint Erin Kelly as a member of the Forest Management Committee for a term expiring March 31, 2023.
I'll second.
And before we get too far in, the Vice Mayor reminded me that we also need public comment on this. So is there any public input on this?
Just checking one last time, and there's no public comment.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second in favor of Erin Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. So congratulations to Erin Kelly. Welcome to the committee, and thank you again to everyone who applied. This was not an easy decision to make, so thank you all very much. Okay, so next, we have a presentation from Kira Skylark from Zero Waste Humboldt with an update on local zero-waste activities. So we'd like to welcome Kira from Zero Waste Humboldt, and when you are ready, please begin your presentation.
So just from a procedural matter, Maggie, I see a couple other people in the attendees, but are there any other names I should be letting in? I don't see a Kira. Can you hear me, Maggie?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you. It's Kira Skylark and myself for the presentation.
I don't... If Kira, if you are in the attendees, could you go ahead and raise your hand? Could this be coming in under a different name or a call-in user? Okay. I'm not seeing Kira.
If she joined us for some reason... I know she's trying to. Should I share screen, or do you have our slides handy?
Either way, I can... I do have your slides here, and I'd be happy to share, or you can share, whichever works for you.
Why don't you... It'll be less time for me and my fumbling.
Okay, that sounds good. I will find them here.
If Kira can join us, that'd be great. There is... This is representing a bit... You're our first local government to give a Zero Waste Day kind of annual update to, and this is a bit of a passing of the baton. And I'm really pleased to have her on board, as well as a bunch of new board members and another new staff person. So you've got our...
I think I've got you up.
Here we go. Okay. So, and can that be made any smaller to fit a screen? There we go.
Does that look any better?
I think real quickly. I don't want to take too much time today. Sure do appreciate this time on your agenda. Usually, once a year, starting in 2014, I think, a group of environmental and zero-waste organizations around the country decided that America Recycles Day was not authentic, that it was sponsored by the industries that are causing the waste. And so a number of us around the country started our own local Zero Waste Day just for public education, activities, and events. And because of COVID, we're doing more of these kinds of things. So off the bat, on the right, there is a bag of popcorn, and wanting you to all know that on Monday evening at 7:30, we have... And I know it says 7 here. It is 7:30. And we'll have a movie about reuse. It's not about all the problems of waste, it's about all the solutions and a myriad of different types of reuse. And so anyone in the public, any council member's staff would like to join in the movie night. It's a free showing. Just email us, and we'll send you the link. And we will have at least one, maybe two, local experts in different forms of reuse who will be leading. And so now, do we just click? There, thank you. So I'm going to just start with an overview of since 1971, exactly 50 years since we started recycling in Arcata. We've gone with a hierarchy of planning, investment, for planning and investment and environmental impact, a way at looking at waste and doing the right thing. It started with the old three Rs that we all learned in elementary school, that mantra. But what we've learned is that became confusing for people, and they tend to use them interchangeably and not understand the importance of the planning hierarchy. So we now, instead of reduce, because reduce, reuse, recycle literally are being used interchangeably, we start with waste prevention. We learned that from public health. People tend to get that. And then materials reuse. And prevention and reuse have long been neglected. If a tiny percentage of the vast public and private resources over the past 50 years that have gone into recycling had gone toward waste prevention strategies and materials reuse systems, we'd be in a very different place now. So then recycling and composting is necessary, and then different forms of safe disposal, which means we're looking for... Zero Waste doesn't just focus on reducing the quantity, but also reducing toxicity in our waste. Okay. Thanks, Karen. So, many different forms of reuse and reuse systems. So at the top-left corner, deconstruction and used building materials. We need more of that in our county. This is just one example from the Re School is one small business that is doing this. More and more... There'll be more and more rules and regulations about deconstructing buildings instead of the old wrecking ball and careful use of those materials. On the bottom, or on the far right, is Darren Ferrera. He was recognized as one of our Zero Heroes, honored this fall because he invested in sanitizing equipment and third-generation dairyman in Arcata. You can now buy local milk at a local store, return your empty bottle, and it will just be circulated, just like the old-fashioned way. So around the country, that's being called return to returnables, and is a far better carbon footprint than crushing the bottles or using... And, you know, melting down in, you know, the collet down and then making new bottles or using plastic jugs. And then the other examples here kind of all relate to each other in how we shop, our daily habits. Reusable bags, avoid all the plastic. I don't like to carry glass jars. I love my glass jars in my kitchen. I don't like to carry them around in the car with me, so I use reusable yogurt cups, other kinds of, you know, good tight lids. And we can dramatically, each of us as individual shoppers, dramatically reduce the waste we generate just by reusing containers. That's it. And just a few examples of infrastructure needed. Not just shortly before, one year before the pandemic, we finished getting 10 water bottle refill stations installed in local governments and two high schools. We worked hard to raise that money and use them as good examples. And because of just making these 10 water bottle refill stations more convenient, most of the local governments put them in their parks and rec buildings. We... A modest calculation, you know, each one of them has a clicker, a counter. So we ratcheted down even from their total numbers, and it was 50,000 single-use plastic water bottles have been avoided from our waste stream per year because of just those 10. And the nice thing is that there's been a ripple effect. There's now a couple of them at the county airport, and more and more local governments and schools are getting them in, and our public buildings, too. So another... The stations are just... It's plumbing that is needed. This is one example of a little bit of investment in infrastructure to help with reuse.
And I'll advance your slide, Maggie. I'll also let you know that Kira is in the meeting at this point, so if you wanted to turn it over, I'm happy to make that transition.
Let's see what's next. I think this might be the... She's going to take the last slides. I'll do this one, and then it's all on Kira. I just thought because you're all local government folks, I thought I would just kind of give a clear what's happening, a fast forward in the evolution of the laws we're all paying attention to. In the 1960s and '70s, it was all driven by Californians, I think, embarrassment and concern about all the litter that was blowing on along I-5 and 101 and around the state. And we had two... Environmentalists had two strong allies in the tourism industry and in agriculture because farmers were finding fast-food stuff inside their dead cows. And so a flurry of laws happened right around that time, and recycling became kind of introduced as an alternative to just tossing it out the window. And then the 1980s and 1990s, it became all about our concerns. Californians worried about real estate and landfill space shortages, and not in my backyard, and where are we going to put all this stuff? We hadn't even quite gotten in our consciousness to the point of maybe we could be reducing it in the first place. And then in the 2000s, more currently, it became... The legislation is coming out, more and more laws about that are related to climate change. And that's one real important connection that we're really trying to get the public to understand, that when you make certain decisions, when you go shopping in your local grocery store or decisions in your daily life and at work, it is climate action. And again, that's one of the reasons for reuse, because the carbon footprint for reuse is so much better than just relying solely on recycling. So it's a myriad of laws have come out in just the past five years related to reducing methane from landfills and plastic pollution. I think the next one is... Kira's up.
Thank you, Maggie. Hello, everyone. I'm Kira Skylark, Zero Waste Humboldt's Public Education Coordinator. Thank you for your time adding us to this agenda. I apologize for my delay in attending this meeting properly. It took me some time to navigate being a presenter versus a community member in viewing-only settings. Anywho, I'll jump right in. The current focus for our local government is to comply with the mandates of several laws related to food waste. CalRecycle's prescribed requirements on planning and implementing SB 1383 and AB 1826 that will include changing habits in business operations, food waste... that will include changing habits in business operations, food waste prevention, edible food recovery, business to business support, food to waste farm animals, food to waste compost, carbon farming and digesters. We have recently completed an assessment of edible food recovery, future potential to increase capacity for the cities of Arcata and Eureka. Next slide. Thank you. More laws will not solve all of our waste and climate change challenges, but we are happy to have this legislative support for our work. Briefly, here are just five of the new waste related laws, regulations will need time to be finalized for implementation. So these won't all happen immediately. But AB eight eighty-one helps the state accurately measure how much plastic is actually recycled and prohibits waste exports to other countries being counted as recycled. AB twelve oh one updates labeling for compostable products. AB nine sixty-two makes it easier for brewers and other beverage producers to create reusable glass bottle systems to reduce the need for single use beverage containers. AB twelve seventy-six to reduce plastic footwear waste by giving out takeout customers single use footwear only when requested. And SB three forty-three requires products to meet certain standards to be advertised or labeled as recyclable and prohibits manufacturers from using the chasing arrow symbols that we're also familiar with. Next slide. Thank you. Thank you again for all of your time for listening to Maggie and I. If you have any questions and this are any comments, that would, this would be the time. And we hope to see you at our movie night for Zero Waste Day.
All right, thank you so much, Kira and Maggie. Do we have any comments or questions from council?
I just want to say thank you for this presentation. At the last HWMA meeting that I sat in on, there was a study that they presented to us. And I don't recall the exact numbers, but it was a stunning amount of food waste and edible food that winds up in the trash. And so thank you so much for this presentation. And I hope that that people recognize us. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any members of the public that are wanting to comment on this item?
All right, just checking for members of the public wishing to comment. And I see no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Again, we really appreciate you taking the time for the presentation.
Thank you.
So next, we will receive a presentation from Sabrina Miller of Cooperation Humboldt regarding the potential for a cooperative micro shelter community. So we'd like to welcome Sabrina from Cooperation Humboldt. And when you're all set and ready, you can go ahead and begin.
Are you still muted, Sabrina?
Gotcha. All right, it's good to see everyone here. Just gonna start sharing screen now. All right, so we're just gonna talk today about the Cooperation Humboldt's current growing vision of an air, a micro shelter cooperative community in Arcata. And so we're just gonna give some insights on homelessness from the work that we've been doing in the Street Outreach Program. Talk about our vision, why we believe in this approach, and then what will it take to make it a reality? And really, we're here today just to present this idea to just kind of let let everyone on council and here know like where we're at, what we're doing. And we really want to create like an ongoing conversation where we're inviting the entire community in to contribute to this and be a part of this this vision as we begin to create it. And so we're just kind of framing this now so that as we move forward, we make sure that we're just taking all of this consideration into consideration. And so starting with the insights. So this is just some some stories from the Street Outreach clients that we've been working with. And so and we've gotten just the permission to use these stories. And so Shontay is someone who has moved to Humboldt and to go to school. She was had struggles with a partner and getting pregnant had caused her to have to leave school. An abusive relationship led to her losing kids and ending up in the streets. And she's been now homeless for seven years. And just wanted to really paint this story out because we have a lot of students in this area and these, you know, coming from all over. And so situations like this are not uncommon. We know that there's a serious issue with homelessness in the student population specifically. And then, you know, it's a story about someone who was operating a farm and the land was targeted by thieves, losing everything. Then they were then a contract worker until COVID shut down and they ended up on the streets. And so we know, being a rural community, we have a lot of farmers and a lot of with the fires and just situations of, you know, that cannot be predicted. This is a situation of that can unfold here too. And so Kevin, he was working at a high ranking position at a big company, but lost everything to a string of unfortunate events. His wife died, his house burned down. But he actually began volunteering with Arcata House and the food banks to support the community in any way he could and is acting as a community health worker. And so so yeah, we're, this is just kind of showing that, you know, the unhoused are, you know, can be anyone and that individuals who do end up on the streets oftentimes are interested in getting involved in giving back to the community once they can kind of get their feet on the ground. And this graph just is depicting some of the, this is based off of the most recent Eureka Police survey. And so it's, you can see here that the primary reasons that people end up in this situation is not necessarily what people often think, you know, alcohol, drugs, mental health. It's actually has a lot to do with affordable housing and the loss of income in a family situation. All things that can be addressed through more innovative solutions to sheltering. And so now just want to frame out like what our vision is and get more deeply into that. And so we're using the term detached bedroom, which is in line with the DHHS guideline and the term that they're using. And this gives people privacy and twenty-four seven access to storage. And it's an affordable option as well, just given the small structure itself. And then having onsite case management linked to health services to really help residents achieve personal goals and living a healthy life. And then we've really identified that about fifteen is a is an ideal starting number for how many units to work with. And so that's kind of what we're envisioning as we begin to create this. And so what is a detached bedroom community? Here you can see like a little photo of what a detached bedroom might look like. So having its own bed, sink, some electricity and storage space. And then communal bathrooms and kitchen, which a lot of the folks living in encampments, they already are sharing communal spaces. And so this would be something that would be familiar to them. And it would also be an opportunity to bring people together through through things like cooking and just frees up space for having more on the structures. And then communal activities to bring people together and to really have community engagements and expectations for the residents to work on goals, community governance, village improvement. And so we're really recognizing that the path to wellness does take a community. And so working with individuals in a community setting instead of just individually can be a really powerful solution for for housing. And so security, we really, we really understand that security is something that both the community and the residents have identified as a need for them. And so physical and emotional safety and having something like twenty-four hour staffing so that there's always someone there. Community health workers could be the staff that can fill that role. And community health workers would could potentially be eventually be folks that are living in the in the shelters. And a gate is important, having rules around respect and safety for residents, staff and visitors, training residents and staff and conflict de-escalation. So people can really develop the skills to handle their own their own conflict within the group. Kind of releasing that need for an outside authority to come in and address those things. And then tenancy rights and with rights, of course, become responsibility. So not evicting people after a set period of time, having terms. And as long as they comply to the terms, they can stay there until they're ready to move on and really working with the folks to prepare them for that transition. And so really emphasizing this this community aspect of it. So micro shelters can really house partners and families. Again, like this path to transitioning from experiencing homelessness to being housed and, you know, achieving personal wellness, it really is a lot easier when you have that support and when you're doing it with people together. And so having unsheltered communities, which we've recognized through our outreach that there are really strong communities out there already, living together. And so having them being able to move into the community as a group could be a possibility. Visitors, so having provisions for visitors, not totally ruling that out because it is important to have that connection with community and friends. And then having something that's located near services and transportation. And then resident autonomy empowerment. So a lot of these folks, like they, they want to be a part of the solution and they want to have a say in the services that we're receiving or that they're receiving, sorry. And so having active participation and self governance, you know, being there to make decisions for day to day operations. If if they are subjected to these rules, they should have a say in what those rules are. And also developing the skills of governance and self governance is a really important skill for transitioning into housing and just a good life skill in general for whatever it is that people might be pursuing. So mediation, training for peer resolution of disputes. Again, really trying to put the like, put the responsibility of mediating conflicts in the hands of the individuals so that we're not constantly relying on outside authorities to come in and be consistently having to get involved in these sorts of things. And then community health worker training. Again, community health worker, the idea of that is that individuals with lived experience can use that lived experience to give back and support their community. So offering training so that people can do this more intentionally. We we have seen that a lot of folks are already acting as community health workers for their peers, but providing more intentional training around that will make people more like able to provide proper services. And then thinking about rent payments so people can build up rental history and then possibly share of the rent could go into an account. So really supporting people so they can begin to develop skills like, you know, finance and bill paying, which is a difficult thing to just jump into and be thrown into. So staffing, when we really have have gotten feedback that really thinking about staffing is important because there's a staffing shortage in social services. And so we've been thinking about what staffing could look like and what some of those roadblocks might be. And so twenty-four seven staffing is ideal. And so we do want to continue to explore how to make that possible. Even though it might be difficult, we do think it's important. Cooperation Humboldt is, has worked with masters of master of social workers in the past, giving them an opportunity to come into our projects and giving them the chance to be leaders in that work and using that for their degrees. And working with social workers, mental health substance abuse counselors, again, community health workers. Providing training for staff is really important, consistent training, really empowering people to feel like they are developing themselves through this work. And then the residents having shared responsibilities. So when we think about things like cleaning the bathrooms or cleaning the kitchens, really empowering the residents and giving them the skills to take on that responsibility so that it's not left to like a third party staff, but the residents are taking on that responsibility and also gives them a sense of ownership in this in this housing. And then partnering with existing service providers and institutions. So instead of this community having its own, you know, its own worker for every service, we can bring in outside services, thus lifting some of the need to staff all within this project internally. And staffing sustainability. So how do we ensure that the staff working here are committed and feeling good about being part of this project? So incentives and long term sustainability. So again, continuously coming back to this idea of community health workers. When you are able to use your lived experience to give back to a community, you know, that is experiencing something that you once experienced, there's so much power there. And I can speak on that personally. And we like, again, I like, we've really recognized that folks are already acting as community health workers. So how can we provide them the means to do this work and be paid for it? Because it is amazing work, that's essential. And then having consistent onsite in-service training for skill development opportunities. So really helping people feel like showing up to this work helps them grow as both an individual and an employee. And then a worker owned cooperative incubator. So this is an idea that we've thrown around because Cooperation Humboldt is helping to develop worker owned cooperatives in the community. And so we imagine like, what what could it look like if this specific community was an opportunity for people to come in and develop the skills to either turn this community into a worker owned cooperative? Because Cooperation Humboldt doesn't necessarily want to own this project in the long run. We really want to empower the people who are drawn to it to become owners in this work. We're simply here to help get the ball rolling and use our resources and connections to help others come into this. And so seeing this as an opportunity for people to come in and become worker owners. Burnout prevention, this is very key. How can we support our employees as they do this really intense work? And so offering things like healthcare and support groups or really asking the staff themselves, like, what do you need to strive? What do you need to have wellness here? And non hierarchical structuring. So Cooperation Humboldt really works to try to create new ways that organizations and groups can structure themselves to try to address this power dynamics and ensure that staff feel like owners and feel like leaders in their domains and their skills. And so this is something that we've been able to offer many groups and organizations that we work with. And we would definitely incorporate that element into this. And then resident ownership. So what would it look like if the if the the folks staying here became owners in this sort of project? And obviously, these are just ideas that we have come up with as possible solutions, but we are open to changing ideas and shifting ideas and welcoming new ones as well. And so I want to open up some space for Oscar Mojean to come in and speak a little bit about some of the work that he's done with Cooperation Humboldt, specifically the Community Health Worker Collaborative.
Hello, everyone. Hello, council. Hello, community members and hello, other city staff. I'm gonna take a moment and kind of talk about how we are not doing this work alone, how we are definitely reaching out to other community partners, taking a stance in this movement work. And also acknowledging the Community Health Worker Collaborative that has kind of helped formulate a lot of these thoughts, concepts and ideas that Sabrina and I and this team have been developing within the Cooperation Humboldt framework. Earlier, you saw a picture of me in a mask and another individual in the community putting trash into a bucket. That was actually at one of our monthly cleanups that we do at the end of the month through Community United of North Arcata, which is a group out of North Arcata, right? And in Valley West specifically. And that is one of the teams out of the Community Health Worker Collaborative. Another team is the New Rising Mong Association, which is more based out of Eureka. And the third team, which we didn't mention here because we don't have a logo for it, but is something that we do a lot of is our outreach program, which is a DHHS contract we have with the county, which is gonna help us connect individuals experiencing homelessness to some resources, some case management, as well as providing them with, you know, raining rain weather gear. Because during winter season, Humboldt can be pretty relentless. In all of this, all those projects that we I just identified are working with other community partners. And we're gonna, there's a list at the end of this, what I'm gonna say that is gonna kind of lay out the group that we we talk about. But really, what I wanted to share in this moment was we're not standing alone in any of this work. There's a lot of people really excited about this work. There seems to be the right type of momentum. And just acknowledging that, I think, is worth is worth saying because all these, all these ideas can't just be touched by by one group if it's to be successful. We're gonna need everyone to be involved.
Great, thank you. And yeah, so through that collaborative, which has been something that we've been incubating for a while now, we've developed a lot of community partnerships and have also reached out to some of those groups and talked about this project with them specifically. So our partnership with the Wiat tribe on the overall project is a huge potential resource. And so the Wiat tribe is working to just carry out a few development projects through a community land trust model. And so they've expressed interest in possibly supporting something like this. And so linking with existing social services, healthcare and education trainings. And then here are just a list of some potential partners based off of our previous work and through some of the individuals that have been involved in this group and the work that's been done through it. and through some of the individuals that have been involved in this group and the work that's been done through it. So why do we believe in this approach specifically? Um well, we've definitely done a lot of outreach to local leaders. Like I said, we are not doing this project um as, you know, really attached to our ideas and ways of doing it. And we're really welcoming in feedback from as many people as possible. We, this is a community issue and so we want to involve the entire community in the conversation and ensure that whatever we do create meets the needs of everyone. And so this is just um a little overview of some of the folks that we've talked to so far. And so what is our experience as Cooperation Humboldt in leading something like this? Um while we have the experience from one of our members who has been building and citing detached bedrooms for the houseless sets, the Saint Vincent De Paul Society in Eureka. We've been doing the outreach, connecting with Saint Vincent and working with Arcata House Partnership, who one of the members from Arcata House is a part of this group as much as she has the capacity to be. And then Cooperation Humboldt in general just has really deep ties to the community and community organizations because we put the effort into doing that. We believe that the relationships and connections is the core to the success of any project or group or idea. And so um we really think that we can connect these various pieces and try to help bring them all together. Um and also, we've been doing a lot of research on other micro shelter communities and lessons learned from them. And we're hoping to continue that research and possibly begin to initiate like real conversations with some of those groups as this project begins to develop and gain more credibility. And then again, our street outreach program is huge to this because we're directly, like myself and Oscar are directly out there in encampments almost every day of the week, connecting with individuals, developing relationships, getting to know people and just kind of building a general cohesiveness in in those communities through bringing in shared and collective, collectivized resources. And we're already seeing the um like the outcome of our efforts as really bringing people together through this support that they're receiving. Um and so here's some success of Saint Vincent micro shelters. And um Sequoia, who couldn't make it here today, has been a leader in this. Um but basically, he has been um working with his dad to find ways to build like very low cost uh housing solutions for people. And so they were able to construct three small detached bedrooms for less than five thousand dollars each. And finding a location was challenging, but working with Leslie Castellano from the city of Eureka, we were able to learn that Vincent De Paul was interested in providing um detached bedrooms to their volunteers who were experiencing homelessness. And so um they were able to bring in some.
Um Sabrina, I'm actually here if you want me to jump in a bit, sorry.
That'd be great, yeah.
Cool. I'm not sure, sorry for the technical difficulties. Can you guys, can everyone see me as this?
Yep, you're good, Sequoia.
Oh, awesome. Thank you all so much. And um yeah, sorry, I, this is my first Zoom city council meeting, so a little bit of a technical learning curve. But um I appreciate the opportunity that we've had to present to everyone here, the city of Arcata and all the um community that's participating. And um yeah, I just, I'll be really brief, but um just want to quickly talk about how I got involved and one of the success stories, as Sabrina was saying, um that this group has been a part of. And so um I, my father, Dan Falk, um decided to invest in a uh sheltering um company in Los Angeles. And by the time the investment had gone through and everything was said and done, it turned out they wanted, they, it was basically going to cost over a hundred thousand dollars per unit to provide shelter to houseless individuals. And so he thought, well, that seems a little bit extreme. And he figured he could build a um shelter for a more reasonable cost. And so he started designing and constructing these with with my help. And um and then we realized, okay, it's not as simple as building a structure, you have to have a place to put it. And that's when we started kind of um diving into this idea of this micro shelter community and seeing how that had been successfully done in other places. And since then, we've been involved in the political side of things. And um we were really fortunate um to get to work with Leslie Castellano um from Eureka, who found this opportunity to um place these shelters at Saint Vincent De Paul. And um it it's, we've placed two shelters there. And as you can see in this photo, the the prior living conditions for um Kim, who's in the picture on the right there, were was a tarp tent and now he has this um sleeping cabin um or detached bedroom uh as you would, whichever term you prefer. Um and we had one other volunteer there who also is now housed in a um sleeping cabin. And it's been a really great success story and it's on a very small scale, but it's in a fenced in courtyard. And so far, um it's been, it's been a really big success for us. And that's why we were really excited to get involved with Cooperation Humboldt, who we know has a really strong track record of like making things, positive things happen in our community. And so um we've been collaborating with them for, it's been over six months now to really try to make this happen on a larger scale. And when we started looking at the city of Arcata, we really saw some awesome opportunities. And it looks like just um there's a lot of enthusiasm for positive creative solutions. And this is something that's been proven in other locations that are similar to Arcata. And we know we can successfully pull it off. We've proven the concept with Saint Vincent De Paul. And now we're just really excited to take, you you know, one step at a time moving forward to to do something a little bit more significant than just the two, the two shelters that we currently have. But if anyone's interested, it is possible to arrange um visiting the the Saint Vincent um community. And um anyone can reach out to me or anyone in this group and we can arrange that um and give, give more details on that. But I'm going to pass it back to Sabrina now and um thanks again.
Well, thank you for that. So feedback from local individuals experiencing homelessness. So um again, we really recognize that the input of the people that we're, are going to be living here and being served by this um housing solution, they should be involved in the conversation. And we've already begun um collecting that feedback in general. And so interactions with the resident population is key to our process. And so, and again, in Arcata, we've been really focusing a lot of our outreach efforts there. And so um we've been really connecting with the communities that are living in various encampments and developing those relationships and getting to know how, you know, how they operate and, you know, who is connected to who. And um also our work with Kuna in the Northern Arcata area is uh is a huge component to it because, again, this is something, this is something that is the responsibility of the entire community to create solutions for, not just, you know, not just the city, not just the people experiencing homelessness, but everyone, the business, the residents. And so we're really using those relationships to get feedback from everyone that we can. Um and then again, our discussions with the Saint Vincent and we have someone on the team from the Arcata House. So really bringing in that that knowledge and wisdom from that on the grounds work. And so what we've learned from talking to our unhoused neighbors, uh many live in strong communities already and they're already doing this mutual assistance network. And mind you, they're very limited on what they can do because this work is not being supported by the broader community. And their training is, while lived experience is really valuable, it's proper training and, you know, skill development is essential to really efficient services. And so if we can provide more support in this, that would be really essential. Um and they want to be a part of the solution, they really do. Like when we show up to do outreach, like people are instantly wanting to help us, help carry things, help clean up. They, they really want to get involved. And it's a matter of meeting them where they're at and trying to create roles where they can be a part of the solution and be respected through their process. Um and they're hurt by the dehumanization that's going on in this community. They know what people think and that's why a lot of them don't even enjoy leaving their encampments. And so to to a lot of folks, us coming out there is some of the only interaction that they get with the outside community. So that can be really important. Um and they're excited by the possibility of this. We've talked to a few folks about this idea and people really like it. I think that um as we begin to develop it, um and they see the the outcome of this, that they will be open to being involved. And then um feedback from, it continued. So um we've already begun the process, like I said. And a lot of the draws to the project that people have are their ability to remain with their community, the security that would be provided, um because people do want that security. Um having storage space for their things, that's huge, not having their stuff stolen every day. Um twenty four seven access, so something that they can go in and out to as they want to. Um and then that self governance key is really important. And the opportunity to live in altering, an alternative housing solution with legitimacy. And then the stability, of course, a lot of these things are are no brainers. But um and then here's some success of some other communities. And so this is just kind of talking from um a village in Olympia, Washington, how it's showing that, you know, two people have been hired full time, others are working as day laborers. And um, you know, people really come out of this not just housed and, you know, working some job, but they're living, you know, some of their best lives. And then um this is just um surveying that the neighbors were supportive and none thought the village to be be unsafe. And again, we really want to make this something that can be supportive of the entire community. And here's just some data saying that um, you know, you can see here that there's just a lot of positive outcome in this sort of housing, leading to permanent housing and um more supportive outcome in the future. And so what will it take to make this a reality? So we've already begun to identify our anticipated challenges and we're already beginning to think of solutions, but just laying that out here. Or so, not in my backyard. And we're hoping to do a lot of community outreach, like door to door canvassing, really getting to connect with the neighbors and having a conversation about this. Um because we don't want this to be something that the neighbors don't want. But we also recognize that a lot of the neighbors already see this as an issue that um needs a solution. So um obtaining a suitable site, funding, of course, for preparation and construction, long term finance financing for operations, meeting requirements, staffing, um both availability and retention. Um and so what do we need from the community? Well, there's a few things, so funding, obviously. And um we submitted a response to DHHS Low Barrier. Um we're exploring Home Key and here are some other funding options that we will continue to explore. So we're definitely diving in the, um, oh, here's some more even. Okay, and then what do we need from the community? Uh continued, funding again, examples of how the city of Arcata can help. So how can we get support through this funding? So support on the Home Key application, lease and purchase sale agreement with the property owner, um infrastructure development costs if needed, working with us and DHHS to identify sources to fill funding gaps um and then insurance under city policy. And we've already seen so much support from our city and government officials and we're really, really grateful for that. Um and then site location, we've been beginning to explore various sites, um both city and privately owned. And we've had pretty good feedback from the outreach we've done so far. Um and so how can the city of Arcata help with this? Um possibly a support in acquiring a property, possibly in site permitting, um obtaining needed zoning variances and approvals, and then passing an emergency shelter resolution. So any of these, um, any of these items of support would definitely move the project along further. And then in regards to operations, partnering with us and coordinating local social and healthcare services and support from the police department and maintaining safety and really bridging that gap between um, you know, our our local law enforcement and folks experiencing homelessness and trying to heal that relationship truly. And missed too for onsite training and staff. So we really see this project as an opportunity to bring community together and provide solutions for everyone involved. Um so I want to open up some space for any questions or feedback as is process.
Thank you so much, Sabrina and and Oscar and Sequoia for that presentation. And yeah, let's open it up for the council for questions or comments.
Thank you all so much. Uh it was a really wonderful and comprehensive presentation. I'm, I'm really excited about this project. Um I probably could ask like a thousand questions, but I know we have to eventually get on with our night. So I'll just, I'll ask a couple. Um uh let's see, I had a question. You kind of touched on it about um the length of stay, like is this permanent or semi permanent housing? Um it sounded like there, of course, wouldn't be no expectation for folks to to move out or vacate. But um when you're presenting it to residents that will be moving in, um are you, what, what's the general length that you're kind of thinking of?
Right, so we really don't want to place um like too strict of a timeline on that, but we do want to get that feedback from our community and that could influence our decision. But we do want to see this project as something that's transitional. Um because, you know, we don't want this sort of idea and concept to be the first and only. We, we would love to see this sort of structure be able to um be able to turn into a a string of projects. And so some of those maybe could be more permanent um as it develops. But as it is right now, this initial concept, we're looking at transitional. But a specific timeframe, we, we've, we haven't thought of that um, or we haven't decided on that exactly, but we're thinking like like eighteen months maybe, but with no set period.
Thank you, yeah, that just helps as um, you know, we're thinking about the, the large picture of like the different pieces of of different shelters and housing being created in Arcata. It's helpful to know where where this fits into the the bigger picture. So thank you um for that explanation. Um you'd mentioned something about rent, but I wasn't totally clear on um on what that was. Can you elaborate a little bit more about what rent would would look like? Um would there be an expectation of rent or or was that just like a way for them to, like residents to build uh like a rental history, you were saying?
Right, so again, a lot of these um are simply ideas that we would like to incorporate into it. Um and in regards to rent, we recognize that off the bat, people aren't going to be in a place to, well, not everyone, some may, but mostly people aren't going to be in a position to be paying rent. But we really want to help them develop the skill of obtaining, you know, capital and paying rent and what that means and build that rental history. And so they would, there would be support in getting to a place of being able to pay rent. Obviously, that rent would not be um at a very high cost, but it would mainly be to really give people a sense of ownership in this, in the living situation through, you know, an exchange like that. Um but there would be ample support in being able to pay rent and obtaining, you know, jobs and opportunities that could give them that ability.
Great, thank you. Um you were talking a little bit about this, some of the challenges you were anticipating and um just from conversations we've had. I know you're looking at sites um more in the Valley West area. I was wondering if you, in your, the conversations you may have had with housed neighbors, if you have already experienced pushback in NIMBYism or if there's an excitement and acceptance or or any of that? And then um ways that maybe we could help out with with that type of challenge as well?
Sure, yeah. So from my personal interactions with community members, um I think that a lot of people are wanting to see a solution because um the encampments are there and people, it's affecting the community. And I think that mostly we've seen people wanting to see something like this develop. But I think the staff will have a lot to, a lot. I think that the site will dictate like what, you know, is from the community and so it's their idea um input's going to be, but mostly we've seen positive interaction or positive response.
Sabrina, I kind of broke up there a little bit, but I'd like to chime in a little bit here because, you know, Valley West is very much uh an up and coming neighborhood and we're trying to make sure that that happens and that, and when I say we, I I mean the rest of Arcata. I think, you know, a lot of the people on this call um would agree that, you know, there's something different being done there. And we wouldn't just, you know, rely on just the residents themselves, but also the business owners um who, you know, have their livelihood up there and also want to see it better and develop in that way. Um I think Sabrina was mentioning our outreach and knowing that there's a lot of individuals who don't want to leave Carlson Park worse, you know, they want to be part of the solution. And so how can we create opportunities for that to to happen, right? And then I think that would make the residents that live in Valley West a little bit more excited, you know, to see, you know, transformational work, you know, not just using law and order to boot people out um and create, you know, a new park for the community, um but seeing some collaboration there.
I I was actually going to just jump in too. Um I just wanted to clarify, like, we, we certainly haven't settled on a location at this point. And um but I think it's important for us to make really clear, we acknowledge that the NIMBY issue is going to be an obstacle. Um we're not naive about that and we are ready to do a tremendous amount of outreach wherever the location ends up being. We're going to tackle that in a thorough and very um like understanding way that that takes into consideration the, the impact on everyone that's going to be a part of this um, this community. So I definitely, like, we understand that this is an important part of. So I definitely like, we understand that this is an important part of this puzzle. And, um, as we narrow things down and get to that point where it requires massive community outreach and meetings with, with individuals and, and making sure that everybody understands exactly what the plan is. And, um, we can hopefully put everyone's minds at rest that we're not, um, going to do things that, uh, cause trouble, but we're actually going to be a big asset to a community. But, um, but yeah, I just wanted to clarify that we, we're aware it's a, an issue. And although at this point it hasn't been part of our, um, agenda, it, it will certainly be as we settle in on a, on a location, um, wherever that might be.
Thank you so much. Um, I just was wondering if, um, there was a slide with some existing, uh, versions of this in other cities. Uh, I didn't get a chance to write them all down. I was wondering if you could just share that slide with us? If you could send us an email or, or something with it? It would just be helpful to read up on, um, how this has gone in other places. Um, but other than that, I don't have any other questions. I really can't thank you enough. This is such an important project and, um, I really appreciate the, the holistic approach that you all are taking, that you're looking at every level and really thinking critically about what needs to be done for, for the members of our community. And, um, I think that's, it's just really important and I appreciate you all so much. So thank you for being with us.
I don't have a question, partially because you guys were so thorough. It was wonderful. Um, but I did just want to say that I'm just so appreciative to have you guys as a group in our community and a partner to be able to work with. Because I mean, already seeing, you know, before even, you know, it's, I don't know, just this, this plan ahead of time and the rolling out of this idea, um, it was beautifully done. And I just really appreciate the work that you guys are doing, especially with the outreach piece and really getting, you know, like Emily just said, every piece of our community kind of involved in it and talking to everybody and taking everybody's needs into account. So just thank you guys so much for your work. It really, you know, this was a very impressive presentation. So I appreciate it and I look forward to connecting with you guys more as well.
You all did such a wonderful job. You know, I sat in on a lot of these meetings and kind of watched the, the genesis of, um, of this. And I just think you, um, I'm so proud of you and I, I'm just overwhelmed with gratitude for, um, all you guys are doing for the community. The outreach is amazing, you know? I, I, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we, we are really blessed as a community to have such an organization as yourself. So thank you. Um, do we have any members of the public that are wanting to comment on this item?
Uh, just checking for public comment on this item. Go ahead and raise your hand if you have public comment on the Microhouse Village presentation. Uh, seeing none, no public comment. Seeing one public comment. Let me, go ahead Lex.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lex and I work for, uh, I'm a new community outreach person for Affordable Homeless Housing Alternatives. And this is really exciting to see. I, this is the first that I've heard of it. Um, and I was just wondering, I know that AHA had presented something to the city in 2018 or 19, um, with a very similar proposal. And I'm just wondering if y'all are working with, um, any of the board members of AHA or anything like that? Um, and if not, I'll definitely be emailing y'all. All right. Thank you.
I, I can jump in and, and answer that. Thank you. Um, yeah, we, I, um, I, when we first started this concept with my dad, gosh, over a year ago, um, we did work with AHA closely and Eureka. And it looked like Eureka maybe wasn't, um, wasn't going to be the easiest political climate to work with. And so, um, when Cooperation Humboldt got involved and we've explored it further, um, we have shifted to looking at Arcata and we are open to collaborating with whoever. But I think it was just that Eureka didn't look appealing to AHA. So I think you could talk to Nezzi further about that, but it seemed like they kind of shifted the, the focus to the other stuff that, uh, all the other incredible stuff AHA is doing. Um, and kind of weren't involved anymore. And then, um, that has evolved into, uh, where we're at now. So yeah, feel free to email us and reach out and we are open to collaborating with, um, you know, everyone, especially, um, one of the thoughts we had was in the early stages of this, if we end up needing to provide showers and things like that, it'd be awesome to work with AHA to hopefully, um, be able to incorporate the mobile shower unit and whatnot. But, um, yeah, I hope that answers your question. Thank you, Lex.
Yeah. And, and just to quickly add on that, um, we've actually been able to work with AHA through Kuna in Valley West to get the mobile shower unit there. Um, since we had adopted that section of the park, we've been able to even do an additional encroachment permit so that they could offer their shower services once a month. Um, and so we, I, I definitely would love to build that relationship out with AHA. Um, I feel, I, I consider Nezzi Wade, a good friend of mine, um, and definitely appreciate the hard work that that team does on a completely volunteer basis. Um, so thank you for that public comment as well.
And do we have any other public comment on this item?
There is no other public comment.
Okay. And once again, thank you to the Cooperation Humboldt team. We, we greatly appreciate you. So next we have item D, um, which is a recommendation that we adopt resolution number 212-25, which is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata approving participation in a nationwide opioid settlement litigation with McKesson Cardinal Health, AmerisourceBergen and Janssen Pharmaceuticals, Inc. and to appoint the city manager as the city's authorized representative and authorizing the city manager to take all responsible, all reasonable and necessary actions. Um, so do we have a staff report?
We do. Thank you, Mayor. And, and good evening to the mayor and rest of the council and staff. Uh, the recommendation is that the city council take action to participate in the settlement that has come out of the national opioid litigation. Uh, this particular litigation is, um, involves the, um, numerous public agencies across the country, state agencies and local governments that sued three of the major manufacturers of opioids and, uh, I'm sorry, three distributors and one manufacturer. And, um, they reached a settlement in July of this year. And since then have been, uh, the parties have been sorting out the allocation of those funds. And we've just finally been able to identify exactly how the funds are going to be allocated and, and should have a better sense of the, uh, amount of money that could flow through to Arcata if Arcata joins to participate. The, there is, as I said in my staff report, a total of $26 billion coming from all four of the named plaintiffs. And it'll be paid out over 18 years. Um, more of the funding will be available in the first nine years. Uh, it, and it'll, so it's not going to be any even, you know, one eighteenth of 26 billion that gets sold out every year. Um, the funding, the total dollar amount of funding, however, that, that flows to the individual states increases based on the amount of participation nationwide. So there's, there's a couple of different levels of participation. The first level being the number of states that actually choose to participate. Some states have litigated separate from this joined, uh, lawsuit. Um, and then secondly, at the state level, how many of the local governments choose to participate? Um, at total participation of all of the states, that it is estimated that, um, the state of California would get $2.2 billion approximately. Um, we know that it's going to get 9.8% of whatever the total dollar amount is. And we know that because the allocation formula has actually been decided. It's based on nationwide, um, reporting of the opioid epidemic in three factors in particular. One being the, uh, amount of, of opioids that were distributed in the state. Then another factor being the extent of opioid use disorder within the state. And then the third being the, uh, number of opioid related deaths in the state. So that's all based on national data. All of the participants in the litigation agreed to that allocation and the nat, use of the national data and the fact that Cali, uh, California, for example, will get 9.8% of the total amount that goes to the states. Um, there's a, a secondary allocation then within the state and that allocation to the, the local governments, the counties and the cities is based on each state's discretion. Um, and so just last week, the, uh, state of California just, uh, settled with the litigating local government agencies as to how to allocate to the rest of the community. Um, one of the, the next tier of, of incentives in increasing the total dollar amount that will be available to, um, to the, uh, the states and, and counties and cities is making sure that all of the eligible local governments participate. And if they don't all participate, it will be a fractional amount less that flows to the state of California. So there's enormous, um, uh, urgency and motivation on the part of the state and, and the already participating agencies to get the rest of the agencies involved in this. An eligible, uh, local government agency must have a population of 10,000 or more. So in this county, that means the cities of Arcata, Fortuna and Eureka. Eureka and the county of Humboldt are actually participating litigants. They joined the litigation as plaintiffs. And so they have a slightly different status. Um, and they'll get a slightly different amount of money at the end of the day. Um, so the, the, the ultimate question to the council is whether to participate in the settlement. And because we are a city of more than 10,000 and if the city does not choose to participate, Arcata's chair that has already been predetermined would default to the county of Humboldt. It's not earmarked for use in the city of Arcata, um, but it would be earmarked for use in the county of Humboldt. So the, the allocation, um, within the state among the different government agencies, uh, goes into three different buckets. And it, it goes 15% of whatever money comes into the state roughly, 2.2 billion dollars, um, provided there's full state level participation. Uh, and I should say right now, there's, uh, at least 45 states that have, uh, agreed to participate in this. Um, so the first 15% goes to the state of California for opioid, uh, care and treatment, um, remediation, uh, types of, of, um, projects. The second 15% goes to the participating litigants, the, the counties and, and, uh, cities that, that are already, uh, litigants and, and named plaintiffs. And they get that 15% also for opioid remediation, but, um, they can use that in part for their litigation costs because they have actually, you know, carried the burden of paying for the attorneys for this very, very complicated litigation. Um, the remaining 70% then is what is going to be allocated to the cities and counties over 10,000 population size that opt in through, uh, the participation that we are asking the council to, um, to adopt tonight. The, um, allocation among the cities and counties, the intrastate allocation was, uh, determined on the same national data that was allocated across the states. And so those same three criteria of what is the level of opioid distribution within the, the jurisdiction? What is the level of opioid use disorder within the jurisdiction? Um, what is the level of, um, opioid related deaths within the jurisdiction? And because this was all determined a long time ago, we know what Arcata's fractional amount of the total amount of the 70% that comes into, into the fund of the state. Um, Arcata will receive, um, .054% of 70% of $2.2 billion, provided all of the agencies participated and participate and all of the states participate. For comparison, um, the city of Eureka will receive as a, uh, just on the, the, these three criteria, um, .117%. Um, Fortuna, .032%. And if you're interested, the county, uh, unincorporated portions of the county would receive 1.03. So, um, we know that roughly Arcata's .054% of 70% of the 9.8% is, um, a little over $800,000 over 18 years. Um, again, front loaded, the first half of that 18 years. Uh, it has to be used for the, uh, specified approved uses that are in the national level settlement agreement. And there, it's very broad. It's a multi-page, uh, exhibit of approved uses. Um, that I would imagine the Arcata will have no problem satisfying, um, finding the ability to apply funds to the, the different kinds of uses that are eight, that they're aimed at treatment and care, um, to remediate opioid, the opioid epidemic. The state through its allocation agreement has applied an additional set of, um, of allocation, I'm sorry, of, uh, uses for the fund. And that'll be monitored through the Department of Healthcare Services at the state level. And this, the city, if it chooses to have the funds, uh, distributed directly to it, would, um, have to do annual reporting to the state to, uh, confirm that it is using the funds for those purposes. So the next steps for the city first is to get an affirmative vote from the council to participate by adopting the resolution that's before you. Uh, we will then register at the national level with the, the, um, the national distribution, um, entity. And as soon as the participation agreement is ready, it will be made available to the city manager. And with my review and approval, then she would sign it. That, that would be the impact of the resolution we're asking you to sign tonight. So with that, are there any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Nancy?
That was pretty thorough, Nancy. Thank you.
Okay. It looks like there, we don't have any further discussion on this. Um, uh, is there any, are there any members of the public waiting for input?
You wanted to provide input on whether to join the opiate settlement agreement? Go ahead and raise your hand now. Uh, seeing no public comment.
Okay. So we can discuss this or, um, someone can make a motion if so inclined.
So inclined. Okay. Um, wonderful. Uh, I move that we adopt resolution number 212-25, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata approving participation in nationwide opiate, opioid settlement litigation with McKesson Cardinal Health, AmerisourceBergen and Janssen Pharmaceuticals, Inc. and appointing the city manager as the city's authorized representative and offer, authorizing the city manager to take all reasonable and necessary actions.
I'll second. Thank you. We have a motion from council member Schaefer and a second by Vice Mayor Goldstein. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. That takes us to, um, oral and written communication. So this is again, a time provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. Um, please raise your hand if you are on the Zoom webinar or press star nine if you are on a phone line. or press star nine if you are on a phone line and you would like to make a public comment. Speakers are, are limited to three minutes in this particular part of the meeting. So, when it's time for your public comment, you will be unmuted and invited to speak.
All right, our first public comment is Dave. Go ahead, Dave. Can you unmute yourself?
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yep, you're good.
Okay. Yes, I want to comment. I recently walked out on the Arcata Plaza on the weekend and looked up at the flags flying and saw the American flag on top and the California flag underneath and the Earth flag fluttering down beneath it. And I thought to myself, as I have many times before, that's just not logical. The Earth flag should be on top. We live on the Earth. The Earth is within the nation, the nation is within the Earth and the state is within the nation. So, to me, it only makes sense for the Earth flag to fly on the top of all our flag poles and to have Earth flags on all of the city flag poles as well. To me, this is especially important time for thinking like this. We're in an environmental emergency. COP26 is happening now and seems more like a cop-out than anything else. The Earth is our home. We can't survive if the Earth isn't healthy. Flying the Earth flag high asserts its importance. We also have the possibility ongoing of, the ongoing possibility of nuclear war. And it can only prevented by Earth, be prevented by Earth-wide action. And peace is beyond nationalism and we need peace on Earth. Now, politically, some people are going to object to this. But it in no way undermines the United States to display the Earth flag above the US flag. The US is a nation and like all nations, is part of and dependent upon a healthy Earth. I would suggest that we work for all nations to display the Earth flag at the top. And in no way does it demean the Earth flag, in no way does it demean the US flag to fly the Earth flag above it. So, you say, well, what about the flag code? Yes, there is a flag code, but according to Wikipedia and from what I've read, it establishes advisory rules for the display and care of the flag. Now, in 1968, they passed the Flag Protection Act, which prohibited things like this and had penalties. But it was struck down in 1990 by the Supreme Court because there is the right of freedom of speech. And the city of Arcata and all of us have that freedom of speech. So, there would be no punishment or negative legal consequences for displaying the Earth flag on, at the top. So, I'm asking the city council to consider moving the Earth flag to the top on the flagpole on the plaza, to getting Earth flags for City Hall and for the community centers and displaying them at the top. Flags are symbols.
David, I'm so sorry, but your three minutes are up. But you did a very eloquent job of stating of your case. So, thank you so much for your public input.
Okay, let's elevate the Earth flag, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, call and user six. I believe that's Joanne.
Thank you. Oh, great. Can you hear me?
We can.
Hello? Okay, good. My phone is less than 3%. So, if I cut out. I just want to reiterate what Dave Nazir was talking about. I have an Earth flag right outside your building here as we speak. And I gave one to you, Karen, I think, a few, a couple of years ago. So, that'd be great to put on the flagpole here at City Hall. But getting back to my climate emergency declaration, many of the topics talked about today with microshelters and zero waste and even the opioid, opioid thing. I think when we declare emergencies, it gives us liberties and opportunities to do things that normally are much more restricted because they don't need to be changed. But in an emergency, things need to change. And places where people can be housed or provided with shelter can be looked at differently than what traditionally we look at. So, again, I really think the urgency of keeping a strong verbal commitment and visual commitment to the Earth by declaring a climate emergency and continuing to say that in every meeting as you do with the pandemic. I would just really like you to say out loud that you really do care about what's going on because we are in an emergency at the crisis and we can't keep blah, blah, blah-ing. So, that's all I want to say. Thank you so much. And I will be here tomorrow and the next day and the next day. Okay, thanks. Bye.
Thank you, Joanne.
I see no additional public comment.
Okay, it looks like there's no additional public comment. So, our last item, our council and staff reports. So, let's go ahead and start with an update on our safe parking program from our city manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council. So, Arcata House Partnership has actually been working really hard on their final proposal. And at first, I thought their board was meeting tomorrow to review it. But then Darlene texted me today and said, looks like, you know, their board is supportive of where they are with the proposal. So, we will be meeting on that at the end of this week and starting to walk through. So, I think by your next council meeting, I should be able to share that proposal with you. Concurrent to them working on staffing and security and sort of operations proposal, city staff have been working on trying to clear the properties, potential properties of any restrictions. One of the properties, which has been indicated as probably the preferred site for Arcata House Partnership, will require a couple of state agencies to approve the use of that. So, we've been trying to work through those issues. But I would suspect that with, by your next council meeting, I would have an update and we would be able to make a decision around whether or not we have to wait for additional approval from state agencies for one property or look at some other properties and that. So, we're moving forward. I think the board at Arcata House Partnership is excited to be able to trial this program and see how it works. And, yeah, I think we're all ready to get something on the ground that's working, so. Good, good process this last couple of weeks. And I think we'll be ready to have some, something on paper for the community to review by your next meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Karen from council? Okay, how about other council and staff reports? Do we have any staff reports? No?
No additional staff reports tonight.
Okay. And any council reports?
Sure. I just want to take a moment and thank Arcata Main Street and Shoshana and Siva Hensels for their wonderful Halloween party they threw on Saturday. It was just really, really lovely to see so many people out on the plaza enjoying themselves. It was a beautiful day and it was just really heartening to see so many people out and enjoying Arcata and supporting local businesses. And again, I do want to thank you, Joanne, for your tenacity and for your continuing to bring forward the fact that we are in a climate emergency. I know that all of us recognize that and we do appreciate you. So, thank you.
Well, I'll just go on that since I serve as the liaison to Main Street. Just an update, there is a coupon book coming up for deals and shopping downtown that the Main Street organization is excited about. So, you can go to our website or check out our social media for that coupon book that will be coming out very soon. Okay, is that it from everyone? All right. So, it looks like with that, we can go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.